We can call the board commissioners, we need an order, roll call please.
Kober?
Here.
Musta?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
Benjely?
Here.
Bush?
Here.
Debo?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Potter?
Yes.
Taylor?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Edition and deletions. We are going to delete agenda item J7, the discussion on drug yes Friday in court.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Are there any other additions?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Board, are we have a motion and support, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda is approved. Presentations. We have Carl here from Northern Lakes, we have Carl here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, thank you, it's a pleasure to be here again. I was here about long ago with the one pager talking about impact, financial impact on the communities that we serve. I'm Carl Kovacs, I'm the CEO, I'm finishing out my fifth year. And we appreciate your service to the Wexford County and Northern Lakes appreciates the opportunity to provide services in Wexford County to the citizens of Wexford County. Thank you all for coming. I'm gonna do my usual, I'm gonna go through the statistics for no more than five minutes. And then I'm gonna introduce, we have today with me Nancy Schafsmann, who's the mother of one of the people that we serve, her son. So she's gonna talk a little bit about that. So that's Nancy right there. And also Bill Woodward is here, who, think about this, retired on Friday. He came, he's worked with Nancy and her son, so he's here for moral support. To report back to our board and see how it did. And that'll do that as well. But again, thank you for having, that is Commissioner representative on our board. And he's doing a great job, he's very quick study. We're a complicated business, from services to financing, so we're glad to have him on the board. And also Rose Denny is continuing on the board, and she is now Vice Chair. So thanks for coming, he has the Vice Chair of our board. So you received the survey, which we do every year. I've got three of them here, and I want, would you like to have 100%, nine, nine, nine out of... So I won't make you do it now, but, or ask you to do it now, but you could, collect them, maybe give them later. You can send them over to that. In your packet, you have a familiar document, and I have some additional copies in case anyone would like. Sometimes these packets are pretty big, aren't they, the stuff gets lost a little, so that's why I always like to wait if you got it. Okay, anybody else need a copy? You got it. So I'm just gonna focus on, I'm starting at the first page, and just focus on Wexford County. Which is second to the last column just before the grand photo. So I see Julie's already highlighted, so may have some good questions for me. So I'm gonna just go down, that first section gives the major categories of services that we provide. From assessments, to case management, to inpatient services, to skilled healing, supportive employment, and residential and living supports. And then, I wanna point out that in fiscal 18, because that's what this period is, October 1st of 2017 through September 30th of 2018, that's the last, most complete year that we had. We provided a total of $12 million, $700,000 worth of services in Wexford County. And that was a big jump, that went up about 12% from last year. So more services are being, cost of services has gone up. We had a slight decrease, a 2% decrease in the number of people served. You can see that we served 1,177 in fiscal 18. That's a slight drop, 2%. The service transactions that we provide have gone up. If you keep going down that column, you had service transactions provided in 2018 of 98,43. So it's a lot of services, it's up 6% from last, last turn. The number, the average cost per transaction, so the number of people being served went down a little bit, but the number of transactions has gone up, and the cost for those transactions has gone up. So the services that are being provided are a little more expensive and costly than they were in the previous year. As you go down, and this is where I'll stop with the numbers, maybe, a couple more. But you can see the breakdown of people that we serve, so 174 people with developmental disabilities. And that's why Nancy's here today, because we wanted to give you a better feel for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities who we serve. You know, we're the community mental health, so we usually focus on the mental health side of things, but we serve people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And while they make up about 20% of the people we serve, they cost about as much as the other people. And that's because we provide a lot of specialized residential services, people require 24-hour care and so forth. So we have different levels of care along the spectrum. So 174 people with developmental disabilities, 816 adults with mental illness, and about 187 children with serious emotional disturbance. And take you down to the last three boxes in that column. If you look at the average cost of service, a person with developmental disabilities costs about $40,000 a year. Many of these folks would be in an institutional setting if they weren't served in the community. And so the community settings are smaller, they're better staffed than some of the institution care that used to take place. And it's about $5,700 average cost for somebody with mental illness, and about $5,200 for children with serious emotional disturbance. I'll stop there, any questions about the numbers?
How many veterans do you serve?
I don't have that number, but we have, we do serve veterans. The count is off a little bit anyways, because a lot of veterans don't self-identify as veterans. So we make a point to serve veterans, just as we serve anyone else in the community. And our region, the northern Michigan region, actually has a veterans coordinator, who's overseeing and looking out to make sure that veterans are linked with our services. So I can look that up and get that to you. Certainly, certainly, we do, we value our veterans and the services they've provided, and the difficulties and the issues that they have when they come back from service, so.
Any idea or thoughts of the reason for the decrease by the 2%? People within that area, or?
No, it fluctuates, and, you know, people come in and out of there. 2%, well, if you, if I look at the, you don't have this in front of you, but your 2% is, we had decreases actually across the board in most of the counties, and the average decrease was about 4.5%. So you're actually on the low end of the decrease.
No insight on why that might be, though?
No, I can't say really, I haven't a clear idea why that's happening.
Thank you.
I can certainly see if we can dig into the numbers more.
I just wondered if there was a correlation, you know, with housing and that type of stuff, so, thank you.
Okay, I'll look into it and see if I can come up with more detail on that. Happy to.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. So of the $40,190 with the person with developmental disabilities, does that include their caseworker costs, their respite costs, their special programming costs?
All the costs.
All put into one package? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, then we get to the more interesting part of the presentation. Nancy, you come forward and really give you some real life insight into what we do and the people we serve, and appreciate her being able to do that.
Hi, as he said, my name is Nancy Schafsmann, I live in Wexford County. My husband and I are the parents of an adult son, his name's Jordan, we like to call him Buddy, his brother's named him that years ago. He's our youngest son, he's 33 years old. He has a number of physical disabilities, quite a few, as well as an intellectual disability. He continues to live with us, and we want him to live with us in our family home. Our family has been receiving services from Northern Lakes Community Mental Health for quite a number of years. And we witnessed quite a number of changes in this period of time, too. Since Jordan, our Buddy has aged out of the ISD or the Intermediate School District Services, we have really come to rely on Northern Lakes to help support Buddy. And more importantly, to help support us as a family, as we continue to age, to continue to support him. Programs that have been offered over the years to help us support Buddy have been support services such as family support subsidy, respite care services. Jordan has aged out of family support subsidy, he's at, I think, 18 or 21 years old also. Respite care started getting more and more complicated. Sometimes these programs even have been cut, leaving us, when the funding was cut, it just left us with nothing. So we just, as Judy knows, we just go, we go on, because we care, he's very worth it. But right now, our family feels very well supported by Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. Jordan is attending a program right now in Lake City, Mesaki County, called Footprints in Time. We're just very much enjoying that program, three days a week. He's also getting services called Community Living Supports, which allows him to get out into the community one-on-one. And many of you may have run into him at Walmart, or Subway, or be sure you say hi to him, he loves that. And that also gives my husband and I great, and we love hearing about when he is in the community and you do run into him, we love that. So we, my husband and I have, over the, over the years, assumed that someday we would probably have to put him into some place in adult foster care, when we are no longer able to care for Buddy ourselves. And we, to be honest with you, have kind of dreaded that, not knowing what lengths I had that spend our greatest fear. But this is no longer the plan, we don't have to have that plan for him anymore because of a waiver that is called the half waiver through Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. We're very excited about that, with the assistance of our case manager, Bill Woodward. We've come up with a new plan. We have a plan in place for him now to stay in our current home, even after my husband and I are gone. As he ages and we age, we continue to be his primary caregivers, but we are, we are able to bring in assistance to care for him with his own needs, in, in our own home. And we're very excited about that, through this half waiver. So we're just so grateful for Northern Lakes. And one of the people that we've been totally grateful for is an occupational therapist that Northern Lakes has, her name is Liz Gier. She's been wonderful, she is actually helping us get our, one of our bathrooms. We're taking our tub out and putting in a walk-in shower, so that we have safety in our bathroom. Right now, as it is, my husband has to go into the shower with Buddy, and I have to help on the outside, and it's just becoming a safety issue. So she has gotten funding through this half waiver, so that we can have a safe, safe condition there, and this will not only help us now, but also when we're gone, so that we can continue to keep him in our home. So we're just so grateful for Northern Lakes Community Mental Health for helping us with that. So we have seen a number of changes in services over the years, we have found that it is important for Northern Lakes Community Mental Health and any other service provider to recognize that even though they may have just one person as an open case, they need to support not just that one person, but also us as family members. And providing the direct care for us is providing care for him, for our son. Sorry, I'm gonna try to cry, he's that important. At this point in time, we are going through yet another transition, but we are very pleased with the services that we are getting from Northern Lakes, what they are providing for us. We do hope that the services and funding continue to be supported by you, the commissioners, the local commissioners, as well as the state, as well as at the federal level. So thank you so much, guys, for your time and your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I add something? While you're gonna come back up, or somebody else?
I can.
While you're coming back up. You know, I get the privilege of being in the committee of the hall, and one of the things that our chairman always asks is, share a real story of victory. And we get those stories every month, and sometimes by the end of the committee of the hall, we're all in tears, because Northern Lakes has gone the extra mile, Nancy. They've helped young people, kids, you know, adults stay in the hall.
Yeah.
And stay cared by, by the ones that love them the most, so that's just been the greatest lesson, is to hear the stories.
Yeah, we actually have hope this year, instead of dread.
Okay, that's all.
Thanks, everyone, for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy, for coming, appreciate it, good to meet you. Well, thank you, go back to retiring. Any other questions for me?
Any other questions, Carl? Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
This time, we will open the floor to public comment. Obviously, if anybody coming forward, we'll close public comment, consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Support. Of course, we have a motion and support, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Present agenda is approved. Right into agenda items. J1, a portion of support.
Motion to approve the 2019 apportionment report and authorize Clifford Porterfield to sign the certification statement as presented.
We have a motion and support, Joe.
Well, for those that don't know, the apportionment report is a required report that the board has to approve every year. It's basically a breakdown of all the millages that will be levied throughout the year. Summer millages have already been levied, but the winter millages, well, a few weeks. And the amount of money that's estimated that those millages will bring in, and it says estimated, because the law requires that we use the numbers as of state equalization, which is in May. So there may have been some border revenue changes, some minor tax tribunal changes that may alter those numbers slightly. But it shows you the county and SEP millages, which is state education tax millages, all the local units are operating in their extra voted millages, what those bring in, what the school debt millages bring in, and all of the ISP millages, and they're all broke down individually.
Any questions, Mr. Joe?
I've got a panel on what the increases projected to be.
For next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be reflected. Yeah, we're probably looking at a little over 2%. The inflation rate multiplier, I think, is gonna come in at about 1.9%, but we've had some healthy new builds that have been going in, so we've got some new construction that will help as well.
Great, okay, Cooper? We have a motion and, so, roll call please.
Robert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjely?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Debo?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, I have a motion, pass it, 90, agenda item J2, can it court election, I believe this is yours.
I have two positions opening up, they expire October 31st. Election laws state that I have to reach out to the four chairs, the chairs of the Republican and Democratic Party to receive names. Ideally, those names are supposed to be to me by September 1st, it is now coming to you, so that tells you something. But I have only one Republican name, and I have three Democrat names. You are required to vote for one Republican, one Democrat. Open Meetings Act says we cannot do secret ballots, but election laws says we have to vote by ballot. So there's a portion for you to sign, and then put your name down below, so. You should, you would like to vote, and then sign, and put it down below, and then I will collect them. The Democratic names are all Cadillac residents.
Who's circled?
Yes, please. There is a city of Cadillac resident, a Cherry Grove resident, a name Flannel Lake resident.
Does that sound good to you?
Yes.
And there's no additional information there?
There is not, unfortunately. I can tell you Doug Brown has been doing it for several years. As a Republican, so. You don't have to pull on the ads or names on, so. And this will be coming back again in two years, because I have two years, so. If I still have. Is that up, buddy?
All done?
Yeah.
Okay.
All done, okay.
Anything else?
No, do you want the total? No?
No problem.
Doug Brown did win. Here is Chad Phillips, want to put it on credit. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda item J3, treatment court case manager, I believe that's yours, Ken.
Coach Audrey Van Alstel dropped in my office the other day. Trying to catch up on this a little bit, so it's completely in item to me. Apparently, there's been a part-time case manager down to district court the last year or so, we were desperately looking through minutes to figure out if that was ever approved by the board, and I don't think it was. We couldn't really find that anywhere. It was?
Yes.
Okay.
Need to remember when. Remembering.
Anyway, to stick grant, the part-time position can now be full-time. So it's basically a continuation of what's been going on to date, just expanding and being full-time. I'd like to get a kind of memorandum, understanding between us and House Com, who is the legislature, just to kind of set down some ground rules, just so everybody's on the same page about what's going on, until we're working on that, and writing it back to you, folks.
That's great.
Sounds good, thank you.
Can you be responsible for any benefits, anything like that?
Part of this is from us.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item J4, Civic Center parking lot repairs.
Motion to approve the request for a fluent sports management to make the minor repairs of the north end drain pipe and drain field with no cost to the county.
Support. Air motion, support, Mike.
I don't really have any more to offer than on written submission, I did wanna address the board just to check after this. The chiller is fully installed, and we have ice. We got it just a couple of days before we sold the first hour of ice. In a few days, I think we'll get a little janitor, and give the okay to ask the insurance company to release the rest of the money, with a little bit of a holdback for one thing, that they're not gonna be able to complete until after the season. We just finished the last, paying for the last of the uncovered upgrades that we had to make at that end of the rink for electric and plumbing for the new system. We're just completing the replacement of the subfloor heat exchanger. Now, I didn't even know there was such a thing, but apparently there's a heat exchanger below the ice surface to prevent heaving, that hasn't been working very well for a decade. As long as we had first choice there, we engaged them on our own to replace that. So that's, it's finished, and we're about to pay that. As I reported when we first asked for the insurance claim, we will be paying for a 10-year labor and parts warranty for the chiller system. We've got the invoice for that, but we actually don't have the warranty itself, so as soon as we get that, we'll, we'll make sure that that is paid for, and then we'll deposit that wherever you put such things here, so you know what we have. One more thing, or two more things with regard to the chiller. We have an application for some consumer, consumers' power rebates for some of the upgrades that are much more obviously efficient. So we'll probably be able to, I can't tell you how much, but I think we'll be able to get some money back on that, to add to the capital fund that we have with the foundation. And finally, we have to put some fence around the chiller, if you notice, the chiller is not inside anymore, it's outside, we need to fence that off just to protect it. The next couple of things on our agenda is, the dehumidifier is really struggling, so we're trying to, trying to get some quotes to see if we can handle that. And then the passport grant application, our preliminary score came in, in September, wasn't bad, was actually pretty good, and we were able to submit additional information, and I'm pretty sure that we got significant, I think you've submitted some additional, for some more points there, so in December, we'll know.
I have to say, you guys are doing a marvelous job out there, Mike. The community loves it, all the other activities you have, the walking in the wintertime, for people, I mean, everything you're doing out there has been well-received by the community.
And it's being used, that's it.
Great job. Thank you. Michael, question, what's the lighting part to the chiller, do you know?
Well, this last chiller, it was 20 years, there are some that have lasted, like there's one at the suit that was going for 40-plus. It just depends on how intensely you maintain it. It's a little, you know, it's not quite the same chiller system as before, these are pretty high-tech. In the old days, it was a lot of real heavy-duty condensers and pumps, and not quite the same anymore, but they saved 20 years.
You come up with 10 years, that's what I was just curious what.
Oh, that was the only, that was the longest battery you could get.
Thank you, Cooper.
We have a motion and, second, roll call please.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjely?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Debo?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Kober?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes, 90, agenda item J5, budget amendment.
Motion to approve the budget amendment dated 10/16/2019, as presented.
Support. We have a motion and support, any discussion? Roll call please.
Townsend?
Yes.
Benjely?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Debo?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, motion passes, 90, agenda item J6, committee of the whole.
Motion to form a committee of the whole for the purpose of discussing the central dispatch, 911 center.
Support, we have a motion, support, roll call.
Benjely?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Debo?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Kober?
Yes.
Musta?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes, we are in committee of the whole, Mr. Skydrow.
Y'all have the written report, I wouldn't yet to get time to swing by the administrative officer, my office, there are a lot of really good pictures that would explain this report.
There are a lot of really good pictures that would explain this report. As of today, the, all red irons in place for the roof. The roof deck is up there. They were gonna put it down today, but everybody left, so. And Dunbar is clearing the right way for Consumers Energy. That's in works. All split base block is on the site, and Shepherd was there to lay that today, but they left. It was anticipated that the insulation and the roof would all be done, insulation would be done and the roof would be tore this week, but we're kinda messing that up. But it's all scheduled, and as soon as the weather is permitting, that will take place and the building will be closed. One other topic that has came up that we were discussing was the possibility of changing the drive that goes down into the lower level. Again, we've got a copy of the drawing, the foot was existing. The proposed drive where it's at, from that blacktop to where the top of the asphalt would be, that's a 12-foot difference in elevation, and it's in a 32-foot span, which is drastic. So what they're proposing, now that you guys have purchased the property to the north, is to continue that on down? Because that already starts dropping off and heading that way. If you head down and come down to, come down to the parking lot, it'll be much easier for snow removal and getting in and out of it, if it's not too.
Do you thought of the red lines that are out here as a new report?
Yeah, I mean, omitting what was there. That becomes to Janet's office, I'm sure.
Makes sense.
But that is quite a drastic, the way it's designed, it's quite a drastic incline to get out of there. So you have any questions?
Any questions?
Sounds good, Joe.
I don't have a question, but I sure, it's heck that a compliment. And Bob, that's to you, because I, you know, I appreciate these reports, the updates, and the job that you're doing. And I don't often compliment people, but in your case, deserved.
Yeah, stand by.
Thanks, guys.
Stand up.
Any other questions?
Just, my husband and I like to take a little drive up there and look at it every one, and it's looking great, and you're doing fantastic job, and I do too appreciate all the pictures and the details.
Next, Bob.
Motion to write some report to find a substitute in the whole.
Vote, Jim. Motion support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Back to the committee. That ends our agenda items. Administrators report.
Not much. Just wanted to, if you post, read your MAC newsletter from, I think, last week. Couple of really interesting things, why about that 16-month pilot project to support evidence-based treatment programs for opioid addiction, and that Munson's, one of the hospitals that's getting some of the grant funds, so it'd be really interesting to see what that hands out. An Eric Luefer's article on the heavily amendment lawsuit is also really interesting. Basically, we're not gonna get any money, but it's still a little improved, so more stuff to, the state will, to keep an eye on. Speaking of state level budget, seen supplement on budget bills being introduced that are kind of just sitting there. I'm sure all the folks are kind of aware of that. We can see that, I think, if not all of those line items, because it's part of our budget, at least most of them. So we'll see what happens in the next couple of weeks. One way or another, finance will have a proposed budget in front of them for your meeting on the fourth. So whether the state changes their minds on stuff, or whether they don't, will be moving forward, so we gotta do something. And we're meeting a food act for the next week on the health insurance numbers, so I had a phone call to Drew, he, you sure made it, we were very, very close to 6% if not less, so. We're just gonna see what happens with all that, so.
Any questions, Mr. Jan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have not laughed so hard when I read the short John Al Cooper, because I know him. He is neither short nor drawn. I would just suggest you work on your wording.
Yeah, when you get into a trouble with Al Cooper, you're not coming back anytime soon.
Thank you. Thank you. Correspondents, who have given a copy of the passion investment report by the legislature today? Is there any other correspondence? We will open the floor to public comment.
Okay, so now, your question is kind of cross-skyder. I did not get on the agenda, I mentioned the agenda, but I had a kid obligation pop up, and I don't know why you reminded me, before I walked in late. I wanted to talk to you briefly about the drug treatment quarter, I wanted to give you guys an update, because I doubt you probably understand what's going on with your kept fully in the loop. So far, I'm sure it's talked about a sobriety court program, and we've been in the program for five years. What's interesting is, I can tell you that statistically, overall, we haven't seen any decrease in drinking and driving cases. We actually average the same number, about 68. That doesn't mean, however, that we don't see a benefit from it. In fact, we do. We do know that statistically, those who participate and graduate from the program do have a lower rate of recidivism. But that is only a few over the last five years. We've had 30 graduates for both Wexford and Musaki County over the last five years. What we were hoping to do is have a hybrid or treatment court, what they call a hybrid for drugs. We are not getting that. The funding isn't apparently coming through. And this is important, this is really why I'm standing to talk to you, because sometimes I get people asking me, gosh darn it, where are those mental health courts and veterans' courts? Well, we can't even afford to have a drug court. Now, when we do have a drug court, there's a concern that our office has had, as far as what cases will get referred. I can tell you that so far, we were nowhere near having an agreement about what cases should be referred to drug court. Why? Because some people think that it should be any court, any crime that involves drugs, like you're breaking and entering. But then our office was saying, no, we're not gonna do that, because if somebody breaks in to Commissioner Nichols' office and they're on drugs, they might get drug treatment, get no jail, and keep your driver's license and so forth. But if a person breaks into Commissioner Porter's house and it didn't have anything to do with drugs, well, he's gonna go to prison. You can see the disparity. So when we talk about drug courts and treatment courts, what I want you to know, as you talk to people and people speak with you, it is actually quite a complex subject, of which cases get referred plus budgeting, because we don't have it. Even if we had done the budget, we couldn't have had more than 25 people in the program anyways. And right now, we don't have what 20, 25 sobriety court members. So therefore, we would have lost some of our drinking and driving cases to make way for drug cases. So I'm gonna end with this. And when we talk about treatment courts, I want you to understand, we fully support the concept and how they work, and one of the problems, though, is, I'm sure the biggest problem, and so everything, will always be funding. So if you have people out there asking you, well, gosh darn it, where are these treatment courts and where are these treatment programs? Please have them. Feel free to email myself or Mr. Wiggins, Corey. And our office runs our sobriety court, our involvement in sobriety court, and we'll be more than happy to give them the information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Jan.
Ford? Full public comment, the agenda reports.
Bush?
Yes, I attended the academy, and she went through Myers whole facility, here in Cadillac and how they're, who programs to hire people and the way to train, and they had a longer stay, or I should say, that was working. We also got to see their massive distribution centers that they built, and so it's pretty.
Debo?
None.
Nichols?
None.
Potter?
No.
Robert?
No.
Musta?
None.
Townsend?
Just wanted to mention, I'm gonna turn in a report to you later about my trip to Washington, so you can include that for everyone, because I don't wanna bore everyone with all the science and things. But I did wanna mention one thing, that Larry Cudlow, the director of National Economic Council, said to us, this just stuck out to me. He said, "Politics is personalities, whereas policies are what has worked before and will work again." And he said, he's not a politician and he doesn't like politics. He used to be a Democrat, now he's a Republican, and he said, "It doesn't really matter. If you put the right policies in place, they will work." So, that's, that's for you later.
Mendley?
Saturday, the 24th, like Mitchell and Cooper Board would be holding a public hearing on legal assessments for weed control. Anybody who's interested in attending, start at 10:00. Park, Cherry Grove, town. That's it.
Taylor?
I attended the conservation district, council on aging, and the veterans committee, and as business as usual, four out of three. For comments.
Debo?
I would like to thank everybody, while I was out for medical reasons, for myself, for my husband, my brother. I appreciate you covering for me and filling me in on the information that I missed while I was gone, so thank you.
Nichols?
It took Nancy Shafton a lot of courage to do what she did tonight, and I just wanna pass on appreciation to her. As a fellow parent, I understand what she's feeling. And Westford County Career Tech, it's nice to have you along here tonight with your videos. Welcome to our commission meetings, and just thank everyone for attending this evening.
Potter?
No.
Robert?
Just one quick announcement, now I don't know if the full board's aware, but not, but Larry Rogers passed away. Larry Rogers is, was Cedar Creek Township Supervisor. I've known Larry the majority of my life. He was a businessman, a man, all-around great guy. But Larry passed away Monday night or Tuesday morning, so he, Larry, stand, yeah, your